November 17, 2021, Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at 6:30. Mr. Pinio, do we have need for a non-public session?
Madam Chairperson, we do. Two items, RSA 91A3, Roman Num- or Letter A, compensation of public employees, and C, reputation.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of minutes. The first one, October 25, 2021. Does anybody have any corrections? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept as written?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain, I wasn't there. Okay. Minutes of October 27, 2021. Does anybody have any comments, corrections? And for the public, these are just our budget meeting minutes. Hearing none, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? They are passed. October 28, 2021. Does anybody have any corrections, changes? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda is a temporary event permit. It is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Special Event Committee of the EDC to host last night Wolfboro on December 31, 2021, from 10, it should say 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And I will speak to that event, since I'm the chairman of the Special Events Committee. We're going to hold this on December 31. We're going to be both in-person and virtual. And we are going to, if it's okay with the board, notice it, masks strongly suggested. We're going to have a lot of activities for kids. So we're going to have it in-person and virtual. We have a scavenger hunt from December 27 through December 31 at 11:30. And that will be throughout the businesses in the downtown. And that worked out last year very well when we did it over multiple days. Up here in the Great Hall, we'll have games and activities from 11 to 1. At 1, Dance Expressions will do a performance. At 2, the singer Stacy Keller will sing. At 3, we'll have Perform It will put on a show. At 4:30, Wildlife Encounters will be up here. We're looking, the Girl Scouts down at the railroad station will do an escape house. Or we'd like to do bingo, and we'll have it virtually. Or we're hoping that we may be able to get a facility over at Brewster Academy. But we can't find out about that until December 15. We're going to have community TV broadcast, a number of virtual performances, starting around 2 and running in the afternoon for those who do not want to come out. And we will do fireworks at 6:00 p.m. And the rain date is June 1. And I want to thank the sponsors that made the fireworks possible. Wax Paper Store, Kevin Larler, Edward Jones, Hunter, Shop &amp; Save, Leoni, McDonnell &amp; Roberts, Avery Insurance. And we are having Wildlife Encounters sponsored by the Children's Center. But we're still looking for anybody who would like to donate money to help us cover the costs of the performances. So I'll open up the public hearing. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to the public hearing? Seeing and hearing none, I'll shut the public hearing. I'll just check on the, on the virtually. Does anybody virtually want to make any comments? Nope. So I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions or comments?
Linda, one. Have you thought of using Carpenter School for any of that?
We have, if we usually use one, we'll use the Congo Church. At this point, there are four of us running it, and we're trying not to get too many venues. So we could always use more volunteers. If we had a million volunteers, we might go over there.
I thought for your bingo.
We can ask, we're going to ask Brewster, too. So I will, that's a good suggestion. I'll see. All righty. Any other comments? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary event permit for the Special Event Committee of the EDC to host last night Wolfboro on December 31, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. And I abstain. All right. Next item on the agenda, public comments, three minutes per person, not to exceed 15 minutes. Do I have anybody who'd like to give any public comment? Seeing none virtual and hearing none from the audience, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the bulk vote. And all of you should have received an email and two intent to cuts that were not able to get on the agenda on time. And these are time-sensitive. So I would like to make a motion that we add them to the bulk vote. And that is, the first one is North, oh, I guess it's Tax Map 93 Lot 008. And I guess it's Kevin K. Brandon. And then the other one is Wetworth Farm Road. This is the state of New Hampshire. Those are the two. Did everybody see those and have those?
Yes.
Okay. So I've made a motion to add those two to the bulk vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so there's, that's part of the bulk vote. The weekly manifest, November 5, was $619,616.47. November 12, it was $1,105,951.96. We are also, the next one is return of the Plant Planning Board Surety Fund plus interest for the following Grove Street Parking Lot, Lake Motel, and Brewster Dorm. Those were all approved by the Planning Board. And the town warrant, which is $7,220,154. Can I have a motion to accept the bulk vote?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Done that. Moving right along. The next item on the agenda, we received from the Agricultural Commission, a member, Alan Frederickson, is resigning as an alternate to the commission. He cited that he could not make a meeting that was earlier than 7:30. The Agri Commission voted to start at 6. This board, after having talked to or having input from two of the members, decided to hold the, have the Agricultural Commission hold its meeting at 6:45 at the library. The reason it could not be later is the library closes at 7, and you have to be in the building before. And they were having trouble with a number of members hearing in this room. So can I have a motion to accept Alan Frederickson's resignation?
I'll move to regretfully accept the resignation of Alan Frederickson as an alternate member from the Agri Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. We're moving right along. New business, commercial landing permit, Millie B., 2022 season. Do I have somebody here that'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name's Chip Bearwiler. I'm here tonight representing the New Hampshire Boat Museum and the manager of the Millie B. I'm here to formally request consideration of our application for a commercial docking permit for the voting season 2020-22. In our current location, Millie and her crew provide a well-attended informational, historical, geological, and facts of Lake One of Saki and surrounding area tour. Also in our current location, the Millie B. provides tourists visiting the area with information about the town, places to eat, bathrooms, locations, other points of interest for them to visit. We basically serve the town of Wolfboro as a tourist information boat tour. Saki. We acknowledge our spot as a high-visibility location and important to our mission to provide our guests with a memorable and educational summer experience. I know in past years, you've asked about our insurance. We provide that. We'll believe it's the end of May, maybe.
Okay, end of May, okay.
We'll get that to you at that time. Question?
Okay. I just have one comment. And this is to inform you that when you look at the railing, your sign will be the top wrong on the left.
Yep.
Last year, we had some of the smaller boats putting signs up, but I want to make sure that you.
Yeah, no, we take the top one.
Yes.
And either our rack card is beside that or immediately.
Yeah, we'll have to see about the car, the stack cards, because they're getting more smaller boats.
Okay.
But it'll be you, the Mount Washington, and then the smaller boats will be underneath.
Perfect.
So, okay. Can I have a motion to grant the commercial vehicle landing permit?
Move to approve commercial vessel permit for 2022 season of Millie B.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. The next one is approval of the updated to-site correct codes. That has been removed by the town manager. Next item, discussion, dockside, commercial docks and parking lot conceptual plan. Jim, are you going to take this, or you want me to take it, or you want?
So I'll initiate it. We've been meeting with the Ad Hoc Docks Committee. We are actively pursuing the boundary survey. That boundary survey is turning into a larger exercise than anticipated because of the number of previous boundaries, and it's actually quite intense and work. We also held a meeting earlier this week, or last week, rather, at which time we discussed these, these projects of the commercial docks. Mr. Ford is here this evening. One of the things that we are actively having some trouble with, and we'll have better information toward the end of this week, beginning of next week, the permit work for the Smith River. It may not be as clean-cut as we originally anticipated, and we may have some delays associated with that. But we should have a better answer on that come Friday of this week. So next week, we should have a better answer. The project is also, there's been a lot of conversation relative to the parking lot. There was some concepts that came in front of us, I believe it was in 2015, to which there was some, some question about stormwater management. One of the things that has occurred in this committee meetings is further discussions about stormwater management, to which I invited Dave Ford to the meeting to discuss that, at which time we also discussed an alternative option for the proposed parking lot, which would potentially improve pedestrian space. But there is a cost with that, and that cost is reduced parking. With that said, you know, Dave is here to be able to speak to this topic. We feel that this needs to come in front of the board so we can get the board's input as to which direction we should be heading with this parking lot, and whether it's a project that we want to tackle in 2023 if we're not able to get the permitting accomplished for the Smith River repairs, as those repairs are going to be done essentially from a barge. So we will not have any parking lot issues relative to potentially tearing that up for that work. That pretty much sums it up.
I just have one comment. And the reason we wanted to bring it to the Board of Selectmen now was on November 30, we're going to meet with some of the butters down who, who are of the, butters of the parking lot. And we felt this board should see what the subcommittee had looked at and have an opportunity to look at what Dave has given us. And so the first one is the one concept, the L1, was the concept that came to the subcommittee. And the second one, which is smaller, was, I believe, an interpretation based on our conversation from Dave Ford on what we were kind of asking for. So with that, Dave, you want to come on up? I have this one, and then I have this one behind. I thought it was just trying to address some of the things we had talked about. Okay.
Dave, I'm trying to get it up on the screen, but I think we're having some.
I can't help you there. So, yeah, the project does go back quite a while, in 2015, when we started working on it. And we have accomplished quite a bit, because we had a major sewer problem there. That was, we had done the docks, oh, amp was falling apart, and we had replaced that. So we had, you know, 100, you know, so we spent money there. And then we, most recently, with Greg Rock helping us with the ice cream standers.
How do you?
Yeah, so that's worked out. So we've been phasing it. The question now is, in the old plans, we had developed a lot of alternatives. We had a meeting with, and everyone said, oh, this is great. So we went and developed certain ones with stormwater, and those costs were much higher. And I found these old reports we did with the drainage, and they're in very large documents, you know. They have a lot of detail about different types of drainage. At that time, was the state of the art. The costs has obviously added a lot, too. So I thought, at that point, we said, okay, we're going to cut it back. So we then put money in the cap reserve fund based on a certain cost estimate, which didn't include those amenities. It didn't get funded, it got funded, so we have certain money, so it's been on hold. Now we're doing the docks, and the interface is what the problem is. Then the issue is with the power lines coming in, transformers that are sitting on, close to the buildings. We have two areas where the power comes off of South Main Street, back of the buildings. One is along Smith River, and one comes right to the corner of the yellow building. So the intent would be to major, one major telephone, power line would come in, and you put a transformer a legal distance away from the building. Then that, then bring all the power to the 400-amp service we have set up at the Dockside Restaurant. There we would feed all the lights and all the docks. That was a plan we've been working on. So that's the infrastructure that's set up so far. We had asked whether or not the transformer could be relocated and kept on the other side of South Main Street. Talked to Barry, and they said, that's not possible. You have to have those transformers close to the load, not just the load going to the towns, it's also for those three buildings. So the significant work that has to be done regards to the three major property owners in the town, and we have to coordinate that. So I developed, well, we kind of jumped the gun last year, developed a plan to see now. So those are all plans that were all, and we stopped the project in 2016. Everything was put on the shelf. We started the fund, the cap reserve fund, then we didn't fund it, and there was different numbers there. 2020, I came up with this plan. So I asked to develop another conceptual plan that would take into consideration the transformers. Need to develop space there. And this is not 100% accurate as built. Again, this was a conceptual plan that showing where the area we had developed to the left and the area to the right in the middle of the drawing now would be the reduction of one lane and one row of parking. Would end up losing seven parking spaces. In return, you would get pedestrian space around the building, and you would be able to bring that major power line underground from Central Ave on the side of the post office, through that alley to that transformer, and there we would run power. And also, at the same time, the owner of the Latchell Building now doing major work, and he's been after the town. He'd like to be able to get his service underground. And it only makes sense to do it all together. That's how that plan came up. This one doesn't include a lot of stormwater treatment, trying to keep the cost down. This one is a little, and it does increase a lot of the pedestrian space where it's most valuable, right on the front. So the idea would be create more pedestrian space there. The other thing was, when people get off the boats, walking down the alley. Now, this one may not be a final plan, but the idea was creating a pathway along that. Talked, one of the plans showed trees in the alley, so we don't want trees in the alley.
Okay, that's what made me, okay.
So that's the old one.
Now I know where, okay, yep, okay.
We said, we don't want that. And even this one here, we have to figure out how the crosswalk is going to work, because that was one of the questions from the committee. And I can get that, you know, figured out. We just got to get, do a little bit more work on the top of the drawing there to connect it to Railroad Ave how best. And we had some discussion with the committee about that, and I think they would like to see that. I think what the committee was asking, is a selectman on board with this overall concept. But obviously, the big thing is reduction of seven parking spaces, and that's from the current. Nothing else.
I guess the board members, we bringing it here so you can see it. If you have any questions or reactions. My, and Jim, are you looking at this possibly going out in 2022 or 2023? You said 2023, and I want to make sure I understood that I'm, I don't want to make comments that are.
I think we're talking a couple of projects here.
Okay.
Funding the overall project, and when the funding, it's all, it's about phasing. What we'd like to do is fund the cap reserve fund, so we can do the next phase, which is to get the underground power in, right? And commit to losing the spaces. Because if we don't commit to losing the spaces, I don't have that spot for the transformer. Or we have to look at an alternate design. That's a big sticking point. I think that's why we come to it. So that, the second issue is on the docks. We tried to talk about the docks. And I, the issue is, is a lot going on. Every project has its hurdles. I don't think this is a hurdle we can't get over, but it's a hurdle, and it was, you know, on my mind, because I had just heard about it. And we have a meeting on Friday with the state, so hopefully we'll get good direction and be able to keep that moving forward. What the town wants to put on the warrant, whether it's one project for $600,000 or two projects, one this year and one the following year, you know, it's for your discussion. But I think we'll be able to get through that permitting issue. But it's a real issue, and it's just, again, and it might increase costs. So that's the project we might say, okay, how does that project impact this project? And the reason we wanted to have this discussion and approval of this, because then it's also the interface with docks. I had assumed we would work this out now that we're getting close to, you know, when we're finishing up docks C and D, we're going to now rip off the rest of the docks, and all those are all going, all the wooden docks to get replaced. And we could leave an interface, and it would kind of leave, look at the way it is now, I think. That's probably the best thing than trying to do something halfway nice, because it would be a mess. But we prefer to able to commit to a design which we know how it would connect, so we could do the details now. So as we have the interface, we could start building it from the waterfront back, even though the full parking lot and maybe stormwater treatment or whatever else might be in '23 or '24.
Yeah, and I guess I would, I would back that up with saying, you know, I think the question becomes, you know, what happens Friday? If we get a good vibe from the state that we, we will be able to get the permitting done and get the Smith River work done, then, you know, I think we continue with the capital reserve appropriation in 2022 for the parking lot. If they come back and tell us that we cannot get the permit secured in time, I think we need to have a conversation. Do we want to tackle the parking lot in 2022 to try and attack the Smith River in 2023 to break that up? But at this point, we've got approximately $130,000 in the current dockside parking lot capital reserve. We're going to ask for $100,000 this year. That will be able to get us a lot of the engineering done, I believe, Dave, and some of the electrical work.
Yeah, right. The engineering is a small part. The big part really is now being the underground power going into conduits. And also, we have some little water work to do, and then the planning on drainage. So right now, the biggest thing is to try to get the conduit in and know where the drainage is going to go, to have our correct levels, and then commit to a design, even though it can be done in phases. So it is, that then also would work with the property owners who are investing money in their property, trying to turn their backyards now into, you know, the front yard facing. I think the key is this exciting project, they're looking for the town to work with them, and I think probably a good opportunity for us, whether we do the whole project next year or whether we phase it. I'm pretty confident that we're definitely going to be able to do the redecking and facing the lake portion. It's the Smith River that may be a little trickier, and they may see what their input is, actually, we get on Friday.
So Dave, you have three phases.
Brian, I have Dave Senical who wanted to go next. Dave?
Hey, we have two plans here. Hey, do you know on the second plan, I like the idea of the angle parking better than the straight-on parking?
Right.
Because now we have some angle parking in, we have some straight-on parking. It's kind of narrow through. I do like this one, and I, I don't know, but you could slide all this towards the docks a little bit and have the same kind of hardscape, if you will, talking about to get that transformer in that position.
Right. The one, the smaller one you're looking at does not have a provision for the.
Dave, do you want mine? You know, I have more of them that shuffle all the time.
I know that some of the stuff is not going to be there, like the trees and stuff, which you've already addressed.
Right. I see that.
Question? Yeah, then here, you see this big area here? I think if you shifted everything somewhat this way, this out a little bit, match what that is? I mean, we know that it would make it a lot easier if you have a one-way street to have angle parking.
By doing that, we could narrow the amount of the parking spaces. So we can, and that's why I say it's conceptual, so we could kind of run that alternate into this model with any other input we would have.
Then, the way I understood it, the first one, L1.
Yep.
Says you lose seven spaces.
Yep.
Okay. This one doesn't have anything as far as spaces. I counted 30 spaces on this plan.
That one, again, you can't use, because that's.
Yeah, I just, right. But I mean, you're going to get as many as you have in L1, probably.
Yes, yeah. Well, I think the angle would, would work, and a lot of people like that, because it's going to be one-way.
I don't have any, you know, I like the idea of having some hardscape down there. And, but I just don't like the idea personally of the right-angle parking on a one-way street.
That was actually brought up at the Ad Hoc.
I mean, you know, the planning board will tell you, you need, I think it's 22 feet between the spaces here on angle parking, and this reduces it, I think, to 18 feet or something like that, so that you could gain some of that space that you need by putting angle parking in. I don't have a problem losing a few spaces.
Well, that's the big issue. I think that's, that's the number.
I don't have a problem with that personally.
I think the big issue.
Yeah, my problem is, is to, you know, not have that congestion like it is now with angle parking and right-angle parking. Doesn't work sometimes. How many bumper cars they have down there in the summer, but.
Plenty.
I bet there's a few, same as the boats.
I think.
But, yeah, I like the layout of this second one with the. But yeah, I like the layout of this second one with the angle parking, and I think could shift some of that so you could get that transformer space. And even if you lost a few spaces over here by dockside, I don't have an issue with it.
The other area that's really tight, I did not like in any of the alternatives, is on the out, one-way out is very tight.
Yep.
If an SUV or a truck gets on either side, you really got to hold your breath to get through.
I've had to go around the other way to get out my truck.
We really would like, again, you know, and as crazy as we're saying, you know, looking at seven, this would be another, three more spaces that you really think that you ought to look at that alleyways and...
Yep.
Look at potentially making it safer, more usable, but less parking.
I think that's why we don't have buses going down there.
Yes, that was taken out, I think, with the 1996 upgrade of the docks was to get the buses out of there. I think the parking is a whole nother thing which we can address, because I think we need to address parking for the downtown in terms of if we listen to what happened in the Shret, they were talking about taking out parking on one side of Railroad Avenue. If we're going to become a more walkable community and move forward with that, we need to find another parking area. Because if you remove all the parking, it's going to be hard for people to get into town. So I think there's a whole issue in terms of parking that the town needs to deal with. Same when we go up and go through Main Street and up north Main Street, we have crosswalks that have parking spaces up against them that should go. So there is the parking issue, and I think we as a board need to realize we're going to have to at some point address the parking issue. But I think tonight we're looking at what of concept of, of the dockside area, which we work, and good point, every one of us go up there, it's tight. So what works for us? And that's so we can go back and talk to the, the Butters. Brian?
Yeah, so Dave, my, my, I just want to understand it all. So power and the front water, the edge of the water, will be one step, one phase. Then...
No, no, no. Stop, because, right, we're already under contract to do the waterfront.
Okay.
The waterfront is going to end up against the existing concrete abutment, which used to be covered by that wood, plastic wood structure.
Correct.
Took that off, and we kind of just made it look, so it's not so pretty now. Question is, that could be the end of the project now, or if we knew what was going to happen behind it, we could incorporate that now and start to, start doing this. That's the question. But we haven't done that design yet. That's kind of what we're looking at. Can we go, maybe instead of going right to the design, we, we come up with a few more concepts with the angle parking and with other concerns you might have to incorporate that and give you a couple of things to look at, and then try to get back to the committee and get their input, get the right sign. You had a second question, though, so...
Yeah, so I, yes, what I was thinking is, the power and the front waterfront could be one phase, Smith River is another section, and then the rest of the parking lot would be a third. If, and like Jim said, if Smith River gets held up, you could go right to the parking lot. My question is, what's the difference in cost of those three different sections? Doing the underground power and then the waterfront, knowing that we have a plan, that we develop a plan for it, how much is, is that going to cost compared to doing the parking lot compared to doing Smith River? Just a guess. I, I know you don't have the numbers in your head.
Well, what we do have is, the, I don't think we should mix up the parking lot, docks, and the WAF project. I think it's the project. So first off, we have a capital reserve for the parking lot. There's the interface, and that's where it's tricky. So the interface, we're going to figure that out. But right now, we have a $600,000 estimate that would take, take us, the rest of the commercial docks, would redock them, make them structurally sound with the IP wood. And another $300,000 is for the Smith River revampment to reinforce that as the concept we have now, that we were very confident we could get permitted until they said no. And now we still are going to hopefully work that out. And the reason they said no, I don't think they read all the information we had sent them. They've just been very busy so far. After they just stressed like everybody else. So that's a separate project, that's $600,000. If that gets delayed, it might escalate. If the state says we got to do extra work, it might. If they say, no, we got to do more engineering, it may delay the project. Those are the what-ifs. Right now, we're dealing with that project. I don't think we should stop that project. I still, as a minimum, we should at least get 50% of it done warranted, and then, because we know that is, is easy to permit. That issue on the front with the commercial docks, redecking it, it's almost like a permit by... The other one is the tricky one, because we're in navigation, and there's a lot of concern there. So, but the dock project itself, talking about phasing, looking for now is to release the engineering money we have to do the next phase or design to incorporate the angle parking. Other concerns that were brought up, I think, Linda, you were worried about where does it dump off now? If we're going to go ahead and do a crosswalk, what does it look like?
Yes, yep.
So we should enlarge that picture to include that. And then there was some, this was a landscape architect did this quickly.
Yeah.
What is that big square? Well, it's nothing. It's just something that looks pretty. So we can maybe do some engineering and say, okay, what is that going to be? And I don't think we need the big gardens. We want more seating areas, maybe more tables, I would think, be more than... Those are the things we can work out. Again, other comments we'd like to...
Luke, do you want to make any comments? I'd like to get you, get input from everybody on what you see here, and then I'll come over to you, Brad.
I, you know, you know, I think that there's, having a lot of knowledge and being on the committee back when we went to the Wolfborough Way and met with the people, there's definitely, this has been a long, you know, ongoing thing, but it, this is, it's a big, it's a big important spot. And with everything else being redone, it is kind of the, this is the next logical step. And, you know, I think some of it with the underground utilities, you know, and integrating what's being done already and, and into the parking lot, you know, I can see how, you know, why it's, we need to act on this. And I, and we are going to lose some spots. And, you know, that's just, it's just how it's going to be. But it's, it's going to be a much better flow. It's tight down there, already is, it is for a lot of people coming and going, especially on the weekends with boats and boat trailers, and it's a busy spot. So this, this looks like a great, this, I have support to design, so if it means losing a couple of spots, I'm okay with that.
Can you also speak to the issue of the boat ramp? Because it is an odd configuration, and I don't know how to back up a boat trailer. But I'm told, and I laid this out with other people, and we painted it, and we had some guys come down from Goodview Hawkins do it. What do you think about that?
So the only, the only thing that was just mentioned that I was thinking about, too, is if you did eliminate spots along that one-way, those spots on the left-hand side and the Avery side would be the spots to eliminate, because when you're, when you're backing in, especially boats get bigger and bigger and bigger every year, so. But even a small boat trailer, people in Bull Nose up to almost where's that, that triangle ends right there, you got to get the right angle. And then that hole where that transformer would be going would be fine. And that, it, it's a natural, it is a natural thing, but people need to get up into that.
Got to pull up forward into that space. If we took out that space number 28...
Almost pulled that space. I mean, you can, you can go to the telephone pole, basically, just be on the telephone pole, but it, it's tight right there. And then coming out with the boat trailer, you know, especially right now with, you know, the building being worked on, there's a lot of big trucks parked on that side for, you know, it, it's tight, you know? And if people don't put their mirrors in, you know, it's only, it's only a matter of time before, you know, someone's going to lose a mirror along there. So, I mean, I can see those three spots, you know? And I think that there, that, that would also help with the snow and the sidewalk plowing on, in there after if we eliminated a couple of spots. But those are my thoughts.
Brad? Brad?
Yeah, I think I agree with what Dave was talking about. I like the idea of the angle parking also. I think you can, obviously, this is just conceptual plan, but that can be, you know, slid around to make it work, so you get that transformer in there where you want to, behind the Avery building. And to what Luke said, too, I was looking at that same, on that outlet road there, those, you're showing four spaces there now. Definitely eliminate that one closest to the parking lot, because that's tight there where that sidewalk bumps out, too, you know? Makes it very tight to try and get a trailer out there. And as Luke said, these boats are getting, you know, bigger and wider, and, you know, they need more elbow room. So that's kind of where I'm leaning towards, you know, a kind of another version of that angle parking and see what we come up with on that.
And I'd like to run through what we've already done down there through the phases. In 2017, we spent $90,000 for the boat ramp. In 2018, we spent $90,000 for the repairing of the docks, and I think that was the underpinnings, if I'm correct. And then we also passed $150,000 for the dockside rest, uh, rot, uh, restrooms, which was not enough money. So in 2019, we came back for another $150,000 for the dockside restrooms. In 2020, we came in and asked to do the repairs on docks A, B, C, and D through a big boat grant. We decided not to do the big boat grant, but at that point, we had $170,000, and I believe we used some of the money in the capital reserve to do that one. And then now, in 2021, we're going, we got money to do C, D, E, F, and G, $850,000. I add that up, that's 1.5 million, and we've done it in, in smaller bites, and I think we've been very successful. I just want to check with you, Dave. My understanding is we have over $100,000 in the capital reserve account, and if in 2022, we put another $100,000, that would give you enough money to do the work to move the transformers?
We've got to work with Barry on that design. So the, the electric department would eat some of that cost, and we would eat some of that. We'd have to break down the design. That's what I need to do, is layout, get the linear footage and add it up. But yes, that would, that $200,000 should be enough to get all that in, and supplement it, because we might be doing the water line at the same time. We have to do some other infrastructure at the time. The issue on drainage and stormwater treatment really is the wild card. That would have, an issue was, and I, I think as much as it's, it's just a wild card, it's going to add a lot of costs and complications. So that's what we, that's what we can do with some alternatives. So I don't know how far we want to go with those. That was, you know, wasn't a priority back then, but I think certainly one issue, the board member was very concerned.
Yeah. And I think we are generally, as a town, spending a lot of time and energy. I mean, our road project is really to dress a lot of stormwater issues. So I think that we've just developed into being more concerned about it. So if, if what I'm understanding is, we could either do the full commercial dock and seawall or half of it, depending upon what happened. If we put another $100,000 in the capital reserve, dockside parking lot capital reserve, we'd have enough money to start this concept. And so if I'm getting a consensus here, I'm comfortable. I do believe the town needs to deal with parking and coming up with parking, and I've said that from the beginning. But I think that we should work on putting a design here. And if that's a general consensus from this board, I'm comfortable for us to meet on November 30th with the Butters and see where they are, and then try to, right now, the $100,000 in the capital reserve was part of the CIP. The parking lot capital reserve was there, so we would just be following what is already in the capital CIP and moving forward on a concept for a larger plan the next year. Is that, is people in agreement with that? Does that work for you?
And one caveat, that we can go forward with some engineering, so we can move forward things we discussed tonight, and then we'll get some more input. I don't know if I have drawings by the 30th, but we can at least talk concepts.
Yeah, and I just want to talk to them, and I didn't want to go to the Butters and talk about a concept without this board knowing and getting their approval that we're moving in that direction.
Right. Yes, but because it's a capital reserve fund, we need to have the selectmen say, yes, approve and you spending money for the next phase of engineering.
I think that needs to be part, don't we need to do that as an item on our agenda?
Yeah, so what we'll do... I don't have a proposal yet, but I'm just saying that's going to come next. So I'll get that together quickly, so next meeting you can have that. And then we can then get moving on these concepts. But we also can get more input on, so take a closer look at it. You have this to mock up. Remember, the smaller drawing was five years ago.
Yep.
This one was, you know, last year, and it's, it's a landscape architect, so it's not, a little fudgy. So now we have the engineering drawings, we have the topo, we can make them much better accurate.
Okay, Brian?
How many motorcycle spots are there right now?
We have the concrete that can hold two spots.
Six. Potentially, the one-way alley?
Yep.
You could use motorcycles on one side, and that would be much narrower, give you room, and get another place to get three motorcycles off the front street or something.
Oh, we could make a nice sidewalk there, a nice pathway. There's a lot of alternatives we could do.
Okay. Well, everybody comfortable? Any more comments? Does that give you enough direction?
I think this is great, and I think when we move forward on the 30th with the Butters, you'll have some more input, and then I'll have a scope of work that we can incorporate that into another, say, a preliminary plan. And we can also then work with the contractor at the interface also, because we got to work that out.
Okay.
Now that we agree to the, this impact, and it'll come back quickly, but it will be the idea of loss of parking, so. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dave.
And I'll have the cost estimates, too. I'll work those up.
Okay.
Dave, before you leave, do you, do you want to clue the board in on the email you received this afternoon?
Sure. Well, I wasn't sure if you wanted to stay around for the warrant articles, or is that...
Nope, but now's a good time to go ahead and...
So, as you know, we've made SRF pre-applications to the New Hampshire DES on both the wastewater and the waterside. The wastewater side, we scored relatively high on the Mill Street Pump Station. We're very confident we're going to get funding on that. They haven't said how much funding. They did ask us what we're doing, and I said, we are going forward with that warrant article with the intent of passing the amount we had put in. And the same thing with the other ones, which didn't score aside. There's an INI for a million, and then wastewater treatment plant for 10 million. I still think we need to have some discussion about that, because I think it's still worthy for us to put it on the warrant with the caveat, hey, we're not going to spend any more than 50% of that if I own cash. You know, we need to get that grant. That's on the wastewater side. On the waterside, we, we submitted three projects. One was the water treatment plant for about 1.3 or 4 million, and we received 50% alone and 50% Opera Grant cash. So that's almost $700 and some thousand dollars. On the vintage water lines, we said, we forgot to get into those old water lines and design them, find them out, because they may have lead goosnecks. Now we're going to become another issue for the feds, and we're going to have to inventory every service to find out. So that's going to make a higher priority on all the 1890s pipes. So that vintage water line gets funded, didn't get the SRF, but it got a 50% grant. So that was a $700,000. So we got over, almost 1.1 million in grant and SRF loan for very low interest rate. So those water projects were all, and then the one that didn't get funding, though, was the seasonal water lines. So we got to make a discussion. I still think we need to go forward. The question is, do we want to do it as a capital outlay like we have been with small amounts, or do we want to go ahead and bond that? So we, we could have some discussions on that one, because that did not get any funding.
But you'll also, whether we bonded or whether we pay cash for it, will do with how much money we have in that water fund, correct? Could the water fund pays for the seasonal...
Yeah, this is all water fund.
Yes, so...
But we have the money, in terms of, because remember, our debt service has dropped off. So taking the loan for $700,000, which gives us a $700,000 grant, that's almost a no-brainer. The next one would be seasonal water lines, we'd have to come up with $300,000. So we'd be looking at borrowing about a million dollars.
Okay, so you're, you're planning to borrow it? Okay.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yeah, we have to with the SRF.
Well, I was thinking the seasonal water line was where I was...
Seasonal water line didn't get funded, so that's the discussion.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, we need to know what money, cash we have in that account, is really what I was saying, to whether we're going to spend $300,000 or whether we want to spend 150, because we have it in cash this year and hope for the next year.
I'm always of the mind, I like to keep going after that grant money, so when you're So when you're getting kind of, oh geez, if you're getting 50 cents on a dollar, you know, zero, then that project off maybe another year. I'll do a little bit, but keep working on the big ones. That's really good news for us.
This is good news.
Linda?
Yep.
Dave, can you send us a real short email with bullet points?
I have it, I will get that to you. We have the letter, yeah. We'll forward the letter to you. Regarding, anything else do we have?
Nope, I think that was it, Dave.
The, right, okay.
Thank you, David. All right. Next item on the agenda, the assessing contract 2022 to 2026.
So we have had this final review completed. The assessing contract and the attorney is satisfied that we've put the language in about potential revaluation, which would take place, and the offsetting reduction. So we have, I believe, met all of the requests coming in from the board, and legal counsel is satisfied with the document.
Okay, so I'm guessing you would like us to have a motion to accept it?
I would.
Okay. Board members, is there anybody who has any questions or concerns might have been answered? If not, right, no. Can I have a motion to accept that contract?
I'll move to sign the assessing contract with municipal services for 2022 through 2026 dated 11/9.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're moving on to the next item. This is one that I put on. It's the Board of Selectmen's request for legal opinion and discussion of the board's rules of procedure. Prior boards approved a procedure on how to receive town attorney's opinion. The impetus for developing a procedure was that two members of the Board of Selectmen received two different attorney's opinion on the same matter, and I can raise my hand as I was one of those members. It was when I was early on the board. I called the local government center, I got one opinion, and another member of the board went to an attorney and got another. So the board, because of this, the board voted to have the town manager request opinions from legal counsel, and the town manager sends an email to seek a legal opinion by asking a question. Legal counsel states the question, provides his answer in writing to all board members. So I wanted to have a discussion with the board to see if you would like to vote to approve that process.
But that's what we had in place already.
But it's, it's a new board, so not, and then my, what I'd like to do is add it to our rules of procedure, and then we're set with it.
So Linda?
Yep.
I like the process. I support the process. I support the rule. But also as an individual, if I want to find out some information for myself personally that I'm not bringing back to the board, that I'm not bringing to the town manager, but I need to clarify something in my own mind so that I can make a proper decision on something that I may vote on or something that I'm looking into, I still have that right, correct?
Absolutely. This is the town's, quote, "legal opinion." You can get any illegal opinion you want. I can get mine. Any one of us can get our own personal. It'll be your opinion. It will not be the town's opinion. We will always go to town council and get an opinion from town council.
Because there are times when, and I know that the wheels of government move slowly, but sometimes I want to get my information as quickly as I possibly can, just so that if something's coming up and I need to think about it, vote on it, discuss it, I'd like to be informed.
It's your choice. You want to pay for legal opinions? I don't see anybody here having a problem with that. It will be your opinion and your opinion only.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? So I would like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the town manager as the person to manage and oversee all requests for legal opinions on town manners, matters, unless the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a selectman to request an opinion.
Second.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The other reason I brought up rules of procedure, because boards change, and I was wondering whether the board would like to add a section to our rules of procedure. And it would be under section four, and it says, "Rules of Order: A New Section Eight." And it would read as follows. Shall, should a selectman want a legal opinion, he or she must make a request to the town manager. The town manager will send an email to legal counsel stating the question being asked, or bring a legal opinion and request to the full board for its approval at the next meeting. And how does people feel about that?
Read it one more time, please.
Shall a selectman want a legal opinion, he or she must make a request to the town manager. The town manager will send an email to town, the town's legal counsel stating the question being asked, or bring the legal opinion request to the full board for its approval at the next meeting. That was part of, that, all that language was in your packets. This would be, we, if we want to go in that direction, it would not be voted on this meeting. It would be voted on the December 1st meeting because that is the rules of our procedure that we talk about in addition to the rules at one meeting, and we vote on the next. So-
So should a selectman want a legal opinion? Any legal opinion at all? A legal opinion to just clarify for yourself? That means that I can-
You can go ask the town manager whether he would go seek an opinion from town attorney on something that you may want to pay. He can either do it, refuse you, or come to the board and say, I've had this request.
So if I personally, as a selectman, want a legal opinion for something, the only way I can get that legal opinion is through the town manager?
As a selectman, yes. Yes, that's what it's saying. Personally, you can get it any way you want, but we're responsible for the taxpayers' money and getting legal opinions. And we found that we've chosen to do it through the town manager. Somebody wants to bring them all to the board to a meeting and get them approved? We could do it another way.
So it should say, should a selectman want a legal opinion for what? For the town? For the select board? It has to have something else in it.
Well, you can work on rewording it. That's just a suggestion I have in terms of it. I, I'm not, feel like that has to be the motion. It was just, I think it needs to be in our rules of procedure. I don't think we need to spend every time the board turns over another meeting doing this. Have it in our rules of procedure the next time we, which we do each year, you know, vote to adopt the rules of procedure. That's what happens. People can reword the, reword the motion for next time.
Brought forward at the next meeting?
Are people comfortable bringing it forward at the next meeting?
Yeah, because the way it's actually written, I could never go for a legal opinion anywhere for any reason, even my own personal life.
Well, we can, we can, I don't think that's it all, that we can add, if there needs to be a word or two put in there, we can-
Yeah, it says, should a selectman want a legal opinion? So that means if I want to find out-
Okay, Brian, we can do that. That's what I'm saying. We're not doing it now. You want to add some words in there? I have no problem. The other thing I'd like to read tonight is a section from our rules of procedure for the public. It's information, it's section two, Organization A, Responsibilities of Members Number Two. And it reads, "Members of the board have authority only when acting as a board legally in session. One member has no authority and cannot speak for the board except when representing the voted position of the board. Members of the board have authority only when all actions are voted on by the majority of the board at a public meeting that complies with the right-to-know law RSA 91-a. The board shall not be bound by any action or statement of any individual board member except when such statements or actions is pursuant to the instructions voted on by the board." And that's for the public to understand that that's how we function. Does anybody have any other questions on this? Hearing none, we'll move on. Mr. Pinio, we have warrant articles.
So working on the warrant articles, draft language, first round is done. The cash warrant articles right now for the general fund is $3,083,000 with an anticipation of using a million dollars to buy down some of our warrant articles, which brings us to $2,083,000 right now for total warrant articles. We've got a couple of outstanding warrant articles that we have to complete. One is the AFSCME contract, and the other is new employee for Department of Public Works. Those are forthcoming. That's where we are for numbers on that. I have got the draft language out to the board, and I would like to be able to hold an extra session on December the 8th to hopefully finalize the warrant article language. And hopefully at that point, we've got a better handle on some of these SRF funds and ARPA funds that we're getting word on so that we can make informed decisions as to what should be going forward or not. Is everybody good with December 8th? It's a Wednesday, and we would just warrant articles to hopefully bond them up.
Just warrant articles?
That's it.
Okay. Everybody okay? All righty.
So I'll have a review of those for the December 1st meeting, and then we'll go from there. The other question that I have, and I have had a brief conversation with the superintendent of the school, do we want to consider utilizing the Arts Center for the deliberative session again? COVID numbers are, are beginning to spike. We get a large turnout, there could be a couple controversial items on the ballot. You know, this is kind of a tight quarter as if we have a large turnout. So I'm just kind of curious if the board would like to possibly pursue the Arts Center again for this coming deliberative session.
I would.
The acoustics are better there, too.
I'm assuming that we will follow then, there'll be the mask mandate.
Yeah, I did have a brief conversation with Erin that we would follow their rules as-
As they are at that time.
-implemented.
Yeah.
So I'll initiate that, and I'll report to the moderator, let him know that.
Okay. Okay, other business. Does anybody have other business? Okay, we'll go with committee reports. I'm going to start down this end with Brian today.
So we had the dock committee, and tonight was kind of like a wrap-up of what we had at the dock committee. And we talked about the angled parkings. I brought that up, Dave, because it makes a lot of sense when you come in one way. I think Dave missed my last statement. I thought that we should put motorcycle spaces on the way going out on one side because they take up less room than cars, but it will give more room for motorcycles to park because there'll be lots and lots more motorcycles in town. But there was a good discussion about all, everything that Dave talked about tonight was basically at our dock meeting. And then we had a very good, very productive EDC meeting the other morning, which, which the EDC has decided that they're going to start marketing themselves more by getting involved with more different organic activities and events that happen in town and make a more optical footprint of themselves so people see what they're doing and what their goals are.
That it?
Yeah, budget.
Budget. Budget. Four of them.
Four of them.
Okay. Don't let them forget you're out there four times.
They actually went smooth as can be, and we had wonderful candy bars and Swedish fish.
Luke?
So I had a chamber meeting last week. Also last week, the Heritage Commission met and kind of did a wrap-up on the next steps moving forward on the charrette and action items that they're taking. They are working on the language for the warrant article they're going to ask us to present. That should be wrapped up, I believe, next week at our meeting. So that will be coming fourth. We had, Pinio and I had met with, on the Public Safety Building yesterday. I think he'll probably bring that up in his report. And that's all I have.
Okay. I've had two meetings with the Friends of Pop Whalen. They're in the midst of their capital campaign. I spent one day doing interviews for the new director of the library, and they had three semifinalists. They did pick a finalist, and she is coming from Texas. Brian filled you in on the ad hoc dock committee. I also have been to two library search committee meetings. I went to two trustees of the library meetings, a lot of library meetings. Went to the four budget committee meetings. I held a special events last night, Wolfboro meeting this week, and Wolfboro Waters Assessing Committee met and met with Peter Countway from Bigelow Labs and started talking about how they were going to use their equipment. Bigelow Labs is setting up some standards so when they look at and do the test, they will have something to go against. They were talking about different types of E. coli sinobacteria, and I l- l- lost me through some of that. And that's all I have. Dave?
Well, I had a meeting with the Conservation Commission. We had a meeting with the union representatives. And I also participated two days in interviews for New Code Official. I think we have come up with one. We've given the name and information to the town manager. That's all I have.
Brad?
Yeah, I've had a, had a stormwater management subcommittee meeting last week along with a lighting group committee meeting. The lighting committee meeting was pretty interesting. We ended up about dusk on, it was Tuesday, I think, no, anyway, last week, one day. We walked the pathway because the lights were all coming on, and Christine had a kind of a layout and what the lights are going to look like that they're proposing from the electric department on the lighting through there. So that was very interesting. Had a Friends of Living Museum meeting last week, and what they have done regarding the MOU, they have sent it out for an attorney's review of it on their end. I just want to, they want to make sure they're not getting into something, any surprises or anything there and stuff on themselves there. So they're waiting for that to come in, and so they're assuming that their next meeting they would bar any surprises, they would be ready to act on it. Wolfboro Community TV meeting this morning and had a planning board meeting last night, which was pretty much no public hearing, just a work session on going through a bunch of list of items we have. So that was it.
Okay. Mr. Pinio, town manager's report.
So a lot of information to put out to you this evening. We've, as you're aware, we've been doing a lot of work with the Public Safety Building. We met about a month ago with the full committee. We discussed the option of looking at Filter Bed Road as a alternative site. It came back from the committee that they felt it was not a good option. The committee at this point feels that the best option is to put the police station at the North Main Street location, the former water tower site. Keep the police, or the fire department at the existing Public Safety Building site. And Chief Zadi will be doing further work with Dave Senical about the substation and whether or not that actually needs to be part of this project or if we can do away with that asset. With that said, there's a strong push from the committee to bring this project forward in 2023. That project would look at initiating construction for the police station on the North Main Street location. The project would put a placeholder of money in the bond for the rehabilitation of the existing Public Safety Building as a standalone fire station with the potential of coming back in 2030 to 2031 with an update to the apparatus bay and potential reconstruction. With that said, you know, we, we also are actively having conversations with another architect to look at what we may be able to gain for efficiencies. There are definitely some that can be gained with the police station. We've got some estimates to transition from a brick siding to a concrete siding, or excuse me, a cement board siding, save us a couple hundred thousand dollars. There are some other efficiencies that I think we can gain on that going forward. There are some other efficiencies that I think we can gain on that going forward. But what I would anticipate is, we, after deliberative session this year, there's gonna be a lot of work that's gonna have to take place to bring this forward in 2023. But with interest rates where they're at, and be able to get a pull to the community on this project, we feel that it is time to bring it forward, and all the chiefs are on board. So I think that, that hopefully will put that in front of us in the coming year. This year, we will be asking money for money for additional construction-grade drawings and whatnot. So more to come on that. Additionally, we did get updated numbers of the 2018 proposal for the upgrade and modification to the existing Public Safety Building to keep it a standalone, or a joint facility. If you recall, those numbers were around $12 million. Today, we're looking at, I think it was 16.3 million for that same project. So numbers there are still scary. I hope that we're able to gain some efficiencies and get these two projects done in an efficient and fiscally responsible manner to the voters, but we're, we've got a lot of work left to do. Any questions on that before I continue?
No, I just think that I'm glad to see it in 2023. We kept on rolling this down the road, and it was, sat at the far end of the CIP for years, and I'm in support of getting it done. Lynn?
Yeah, just curious what the argument against Filter Bed Road was.
Excellent question. So there was a lot of work that would have to be done to the road. The road would have to be made a through road. Additionally, they did not like the idea of coming through residential neighborhoods for response. So they both felt that they were better, would better serve the community in the other two locations that we're at. I agree, Brian. I think that it was a valuable option, but at the end of the day, you know, it would be expensive to build that road through there, and it would be disturbing to the neighborhood. So I'm supportive of where we're at at this point. I think we've, we've looked at every option that we possibly can now, sort of another piece of property coming available where we can do a standalone Public Safety Building, which we don't have that massive land available in a reasonable dis proximity to the downtown. Okay, so continuing on, Pop Whalen. We met with the architects for Pop Whalen today. We met, we've picked a construction manager to help us get the estimate mating done for warrant article language. I don't know if the board wants to appoint somebody to that committee or not. I know Linda's attended a lot of the meetings from the Pop Whalen, Friends of Pop Whalen perspective, but I don't know if the board wants to have somebody involved in this. We're scheduled to meet on the 24th at noon time with the construction manager and the architect to start discussing the project, and we anticipate having weekly meetings between the construction manager, the architect, myself, and Victor Druin from the Friends of Pop Whalen. So is there any board member that is interested in participating? You're interested, Brian? Okay. So I'll get you the information. It'll be 24th at 12 o'clock right here, and the construction manager is CCI. We've used them in the past on that building. There, there was only two bidders, and they put together the most comprehensive package. Additionally, they're the only one who had experience with rinks, so that, that's why we really went that direction because of their experience with rinks where the other contractor did not. So I will get you that invite, Brian. Thank you. As the board is aware, and we'll announce it now, we've been working with legal counsel regarding Winnebago Estates. We have a agreement in place to sell the 24 lots and get those back on the tax rolls. The developer, Peratus Ventures, they have 45 days from the date that this was signed to go through, evaluate the buildability of the lots, and to work to create homeowners' association and purchase the properties. We've been working closely with legal counsel, will continue to. The price at this point is $310,000 for the lots, and the good news is it'll put it back on the tax rolls. So that is been a, an issue for a long time, and we've got some movement on it, and we're excited, and the developer is excited as well. Tomorrow at 11 o'clock, I have a meeting with the two groups about bicycles in town, some of the bike paths that are being built on town property. I'd like to have, be able to have two Board of Selectmen members, if possible, attend that meeting with me. There's some pretty great things that are happening on these bike paths, but the problem that we're having right now, I think, is there's a disconnect between the two groups and the work that they're doing on town property. So the hopes tomorrow is we can have a conversation, we can come up with a communications plan which has those two groups working together as opposed to opposing one another, and to get a clearer understanding of them coming and communicating with the board relative to what they're doing on town property. It really is quite interesting, and some of the work that has been done is absolutely amazing, and it's, it's definitely will be an attraction to our community, and I think it has the potential of bringing a lot of money into our local businesses. So do I have any Board of Selectmen members that would like to attend?
I would have liked to, but I gotta take my grandson to get a flu shot tomorrow, so I will not be able to.
11 o'clock?
But if there's another meeting, I would like to be included.
11 o'clock tomorrow, where?
Downstairs conference room. It actually will probably be up here, down there. Brian and Luke, wonderful. Thank you very much. And the last thing I've got is a little bit of good news. Obviously, we've been going through budgets. We got the health insurance information, looking at a 2.4% increase.
Whoa.
So a little bit of good news there. So I don't have what that equates to yet, but Casey will be putting that together, and we should have that for the next budget committee meeting. And of course, we've been just attending budget committee meetings, and those have actually gone very well. The only problem is we don't have the ability to livestream well from the library, and a little bit of heartburn about that, but other than that, the meeting's been going very well.
Jimmy, you should look in, they have this owl.
The owl. I heard about the owl.
Yeah, with webcam, and we did some of our interviews that way, so you definitely should follow through on that one.
I was told about the owl today, so we will be looking into it, and I was given the contact person of who I should talk to to figure out if we can use that or not.
Jim, where is the Pop Whalen meeting?
That will be downstairs in the conference room. The, the construction manager will be here, but the architect and probably Victor will be removed. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I know that Alyssa called me and told me she would not be able to make it today, so I know there's no questions from the press. Is there anybody who'd like to give us any public input? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. I need a motion to go into non-public session.
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? Brad?
Yes.
Dave? Linda, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.